We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which we stand, and one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to read our school committee's statement. The committee represents the needs of all Leominster Public Schools students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Leominster. At this time, we will be opening up our public forum. And there are a bunch of folks who have been signed up. The first one is Wendy Anderson. If you can come forward. Wendy, we're asking everybody, when you're done, there's wipes on the podium, to please wipe off the microphone and wherever you touched on the podium and dispose of it in the trash can next to the podium. Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
I'm Wendy Anderson, and I live at 104 Harrison Street. I am really at a loss as to what we are doing here. There is a regular meeting a week from tonight, and it was announced that planning for further expansion of those students in school in person and the needed resources would be tackled. And there is a meeting on the books for tonight with the purpose of having an outside person from MASC conduct a workshop on working together, ethics and protocols, as much needed now as it was when I sat on that side of the table and dealt with the same problems. Sending police to notify school committee members of this meeting is incredibly intimidating, and I'm not sure it's a proper use of city resources. It seems that bullying and intimidation tactics are still the order of the day, and while so inappropriate, it is also typical. Tonight's planned workshop would be so helpful. Inflammatory accusations were made with the last superintendent are being made again now crying mismanagement of funds. We have had, I believe, eight superintendents in the mayor's 27 or so years, and the common denominator seems to be one person, and maybe that's where we should be looking. I hope we are not here for a full push to a return to or further additions to hybrid unless there's also the needed funds to fully staff schools with teachers and support staff and fund transportation at a level that is safe for our children. I, for one, am not okay with the mayor using the city students as pawns in his game of beat up the school committee. I know that most students learn better and teachers teach more effectively when together, but planning the next phase of opening needs to take the health and well-being of every student and every staff member and their families into account as well. I am not comfortable with even one single death of a student, staff, or one of their family members because we didn't do this right. And lastly, I ask everyone to consider the possibility that when you make the argument our numbers are low, it is because we have been slow and cautious. In the words of Dr. Fauci, if it looks like you're overreacting, you're doing it right.
Okay, thank you. The next speaker is Josh Anderson.
I live on 104 Harrison Street. I'm here tonight because I'm disgusted by what I've seen and heard over the past little while. My best friends have been treated like pawns, and their lives have been treated as disposable. The argument between virtual and in-person schooling is ridiculous at best. Not only is it not safe, the fact of the matter is, it's because we don't have enough teachers and staff to make it sustainable. Hundreds of teacher and staff were laid off, and around a month later, you demand we go back. It's almost funny. And while the adults of this city bitter childishly back and forth, the voices of actual students have been largely ignored in conversation about our own health and safety. Riddle me this: When is the last time you asked an actual LHS student how they feel about all this? Students being left out of the conversation has honestly been a theme of Mayor Mazarela's time in office. I've been taught since elementary school the effects of bullying, and now, here I stand watching the biggest bully of all be elected as mayor for almost 30 years. This meeting is unnecessary and inane, and I apologize to all the school committee members who have to be here. Thank you for your time.
The next person to speak is Jean Liddy. And Jean, we're asking that once you're done, if you can take a wipe, wipe off the microphone in any place you touched on the podium and dispose of it in the trash can next to the podium. Thank you.
My name is Jean Liddy. I live at 149 Prospect Street. I have a sophomore at LHS in the Life Skills Program. A big shout-out to those teachers and staff for doing all their hard work. I'd also like to thank the school committee. I appreciate your dedication in these difficult times. Although I'm disappointed Superintendent Deacon's recommendation to initially start as hybrid was rejected. The mayor grandstands on the social media about there being no plan to return, but I understand there is a tiered plan to return, having students back in the buildings by early November. I urge you to consider moving forward with the timeline to bring students back. Our mayor proclaims he's concerned about students' mental health, risks for falling behind, and equity in education. This newly found concern is utterly contrary to his continuous underfunding and manipulation of resources, either by his single-minded stance that 1% over Chapter 70 is good enough, playing the shell game with Medicaid reimbursement, or issuing more than $6 million in charge backs for items like snow plowing schools. Why did we have a tax hike when we are swimming in free cash, have overfunded our pension fund, and have a staggering stabilization fund, yet we cannot fund our schools with a bare minimum budget? Maybe we should be grateful that our approximately 50% of the slash $6 million has been thrown back to LPS as the proverbial bone. Our students were behind before they even started this remote race. Much of the struggle and struggle are directly linked to the chronic lack of funding for technology. We could have been prepared for a forced shutdown long before it happened if technology was considered an investment and not just a photo op. Without grant money, Leominster would still be out without technology for our students. Our chronic goal is to see our students back in the classrooms, but we remain ill-prepared as students will be walking into the same old daily struggle with minimally maintained school buildings, lack of staffing and resources. The mayor uses his public presence to say he's concerned about our students when his actions prove otherwise. It infuriates me to hear the mayor repeatedly deceive our citizens while using our students as political pawns.
Your two minutes are up. Just a second. Thank you. Just to remind everyone who's speaking, there is a two-minute time limit. The next person up is Frank Cohen. And Frank, in case you haven't heard, when you're done speaking, if you can take a wipe and wipe off the microphone and the podium where you've touched and dispose of it at the trash can. Thank you.
Thank you for letting me speak today. I appreciate it. I know there's a lot of questions about whether or not this meeting should be held, but why don't you just see it as the outgrowth of just a lot of pent-up frustration by families in the school system, just really eager to express themselves about the present-day and unprecedented situation that we face in the schools. I do want to state that it is, I'm on hour 23 of a 25-hour fast because it is Yom Kippur, and I know we don't have a lot of Jewish families in the school system, but it's not ideal conditions for me to be here. No resentment, just want it noted for next time, please. Thank you. I want to know, what are the specific benchmarks for reopening our schools? Because they aren't the Desi ones, which we have surpassed with flying colors for many weeks now. So what are they? Please just, I'm not asking you to answer it here, I know you can't, but you need to give a precise answer for the sake of transparency. What health indicators do we want to meet? Do we have to be at zero positive tests? Are we waiting for a vaccine? Do you know that 40% of the American public, when polled, will not take a vaccine? So getting to herd immunity is going to be real difficult. Are we waiting for herd immunity? Why? Also, I'd like to see a little better job of publicizing these meetings and the means to attend them, and I know everyone says, well, there's so much apathy, folks don't usually want to attend meetings, but when it comes to an issue of putting 6,000 students in the school district into remote learning, then people want to attend. And it's their right, anyway. They need to be publicized better, and I don't understand why you don't go to where the people are, like on Facebook or Instagram. Just set up a page, announce the meeting, give the Zoom information, time, place, everything. There's no excuse for it.
I'm sorry, your two minutes are up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please wipe down the microphone area. Okay, the next person, and I hope I'm pronouncing your name right, is Frank Artinger.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Frank Artinger, Legally Thomas Artinger, and I live at 12 Narcissus Road in Leominster. I do not have any children in the school system right now, but I do have grandchildren. So I'm here to speak on behalf of all the children and the working parents tonight. On July 30th, the Leominster School Committee voted 5 to 4 for remote learning in the Leominster School System, despite a poll conducted by the superintendent that showed overwhelming support for both parents, from both parents and teachers, to some form of in-person education. Why did these five members vote against the will of the parents and the teachers? The only reason that I saw was in a newspaper article that said there may be a spike in COVID-19. Well, there may be a tornado in Leominster tomorrow, but we don't all go and hide in the basement and wait for it to happen. We make plans, and then we act on those plans where it's necessary. Why couldn't the school committee have voted to do something like this? Let the schools open, and then if a spike happened, make a contingency plan for it. During the COVID-19 outbreak, I've heard constantly, "Follow the science, follow the science." In Leominster, we've had less than 2% of the population contract the COVID-19 virus. The CDC reports that the under-20-year population, the COVID-19 infection rate is very, very low, and the severity of the infection is usually very low. Most cases of the COVID-19 infection in the school-aged children affect those that have underlying health conditions, and these children should have an option for remote learning. I would suggest that going to Market Basket, Lowe's, or Home Depot with a parent gives a child probably a higher chance of contracting the COVID-19 than going to school in a safe environment.
Your two minutes are up.
Well, thank you. I didn't get to say everything, but thank you.
Thank you. Can you please use a wipe to wipe down the microphone and the podium before you leave? Thank you.
Counselor, can you just leave through this exit? We're trying to get everyone to leave up this exit and come in that exit, so there's no running into other people.
The next person up is Caitlin Volpe.
I live at 20 Shady Lane in Leominster. First of all, I want to start this saying that the teachers are hugely appreciated, and they're doing an amazing job. We are right there with them. We have nothing against them, so I just wanted to start with that. So no one knows the children in this school better than their parents. As a parent of two children in the school system, I am pleading with you that you put politics and your differences with the mayor aside and get these kids back to school. They are depending on us, on you, since you are the only ones that can make this decision. Consider the people that you represent and do the right thing. Make the budget work, no matter how difficult. We pay a ridiculous amount of money in taxes to live here, and therefore, there should be no issue with money. The issue clearly lies with your budgeting. You are using COVID as an excuse. Parents in this city are dealing with the unimaginable. They are struggling to make ends meet, and they are watching their children regress in ways that you cannot possibly imagine, because you don't have kids in the school system. You're ignoring the people that you voted in. You're ignoring the people that voted you in. Kids are suffering because of you. Remote learning is causing health issues involving brain development and overstimulation. My kids are having full-on meltdowns every day. It is totally abnormal for children to not be around their other children. A huge part of their learning is learning from each other. My third grader, when brought to a playground the other day, actually said that he didn't want to go to a playground with other kids because he wanted to just play with his brother. This broke my heart, because my son is usually very social and loves making friends on his own. Kids are not receiving a proper education. This will greatly affect them later in life. In-person education is a right. Problems aren't being seen by their teachers and issues are not being addressed in the way that they should be. IEPs are also not being met. They are legally binding documents, and not one of them includes remote learning. That's what I have to say today. Please, please consider my two children that are not getting what they deserve right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up is Robert Volpe.
She wants to wait with her family, right?
You're all set to go.
Thank you. My name is Rob Volpe, 20 Shady Lane, Leominster. I have two kids in the system. I don't have anything prepared to say, because, as you all know, I've said it all, right? I mean, there's nothing left to say. So I'm just going to share a story, a very difficult story for me. I was at the playground the other day, and the kids that came together, played together. The kid that showed up alone, played alone. This is damaging this generation. This is going to be a dangerous generation. There's groups of kids playing different parts of the playground. They would not integrate. That's not natural. This is not natural. What I really struggle to understand is that I've heard excuses. It's COVID. It's the budget. This many people are laid off. These people won't come back to work. But in the middle of all this, the mayor's getting blasted, and then the school committee gets blasted, and then I just blast everybody. But in the middle is our kids, okay? I beg, reconsider. And I lean, you're on your phone. So I need you to listen to me, okay? And this is the problem.
I'm sorry. It was just the other member trying to get in.
Oh, so you're texting each other?
She's trying to call in, and she's having difficulty.
Okay.
It's supposed to be available for all parties, but I'm listening, and please continue.
Once again, not being heard is an example of it. There's people that could answer that phone call. You're not listening to the people of Leominster. I pay taxes. Let me tell you something, too. Who are you to say which groups can come back, at what time? That is a civil rights violation. This is an inclusive public school, not exclusive. And I'll stop.
Thank you. If you can, please wipe down the podium area of the microphone, and then you're exiting to your left.
Thank you.
So I'm wondering if the technical guy's in the back. It seems like Sue was having difficulty. Can you tell if she was on, joining us remotely?
We could hear her talking. That was her talking.
I can't hear her talking, and she had called me, and I just texted her.
Does she have the number?
Yes, Dean, you provided the number, correct?
I could hear her talking. That was her on the, could you hear somebody coming through the speaker? That was her.
I'm sorry for that disruption. The next person up is Chris Kenny.
My name is Chris Kenny. I live at 57 Benjamin Street.
Could you just lift the microphone up a little bit? Thank you.
Sure. Thanks. Not used to standing still, so this is going to be a difficult one. As I stood outside and I listened, I heard a lot of numbers. I heard a lot of political rancor, who's at fault. I'm here to explain what my family's situation is as of today. I have a son that's in Group 6A at Skyview Middle School. His name is Silas. He's an incredible young man, friendly, highly intelligent. At two years old, he was diagnosed with autism. He has grown so much since he was two years old and broke barriers that they thought he would never break, to the point where he's in an inclusive classroom. He's not in a subset, he's in an inclusive classroom. Later on, as he got older, he was diagnosed with ADHD. He has trouble with transitions, still has trouble with attention, has trouble because of his autism with abstract thinking. He's very analytical. He has an IEP. He has an aide that helps him when he's in class. The aide, while he's in the classroom, can help him with all three of these areas that he's struggling with. On the computer, he can't. Why, you say? Because, hey, we're on Zoom, everyone, for the aide to help him, the aide has to interrupt the entire class. So the aides, and I may be wrong, may have been told, "Don't interrupt the class," you know, "Don't interrupt the flow," whatever. In the classroom, the aide could go over to him and give him the help he needs. My son Silas is suffering. He's suffering. The spring, when this all happened, and I know it was new, he lost a half a year of school. He fell backwards. And as a father, that's painful, to watch your kid suffer like that.
Unfortunately, your two minutes are up.
Oh, that was quick. Thank you.
Thank you. Could you please wipe everything down and make sure you take your mask with you? The next person up will be Greg Thomas.
I appreciate your time being here. I know this taking out from your normal session, but, you know, I continue to hear the challenges. I've been on every call. I've heard every aspect of this. I've had calls with Superintendent Deacon. I've spoken with many teachers, and what I hear is this desire for students and teachers to come back. And now, what I'm feeling is not just that we're holding our students back, we're holding our teachers back. I appreciate a superintendent that's willing to go into families' homes and understand what their perspective is and how they are experiencing this remote learning. I appreciate a mayor who's speaking up and wants to understand, really, down to the budget, what are we lacking? What we need to understand is what this gap is here, because we know that the data out there from the last two weeks, this data has publicly published a report that shows that the average age of people going into the hospital right now are 63 years old for the last two weeks, for 100,000 people being tested positive. The average age of people dying from COVID is 82 years old. These numbers don't match up with what we are expecting from a return to school, and we need to acknowledge that that data is telling us exactly opposite of what we're currently doing. So we have teachers that all I hear from is the teachers saying they need this for their students to be successful. I never hear them complaining that they aren't successful because of this. What I read on previous budget reports, the biggest challenge for principals, and when I see it on the report, is that the most common thing is absenteeism and lack of engagement by students. Those two things are inherently made worse by remote learning. My daughter, who's on an IEP, my youngest in kindergarten, it's great that she's coming back. I have a second grader who's also doing remote learning. Kids are struggling.
Unfortunately, your two minutes is up. If you could please wipe everything down, that would be greatly appreciated. Next person is Daniel Fenner.
My name's Daniel Fenner. I reside at 18 Manchester Street. I'm a proud husband and father to three young children. As a member of the Leominster community almost my entire life, I finally, for the first time, found disappointment in our city. The school committee failed us with the initial vote to go fully remote. I always promised I would never be the type of parent that created waves with the school system, as I have high respect for anyone willing to educate our youth. I fully understand all parents are struggling, and my family is in a much better situation than some. However, watching my child fail and a generation of children being intellectually crippled is so disheartening that not speaking up just seems wrong at this point. I initially wanted to talk about my son's failed experiences with remote learning, but I think we're all quickly learning the downfall of sitting in front of a computer for hours on end. So instead, I'd like to hopefully help motivate the school committee to find a resolution. I'll give you an analogy to help you make my point. I grew up in a single-parent home. My mother had me as a teenager, and our entire lives were a struggle. I was held back in first grade, and to this day, I hold that as a chip on my shoulder. My mother worked hard, and no amount of money was ever enough. We struggled. I mean, really, really struggled. But guess what? We always found a way. No matter what the challenge was, we always found a way. It's my understanding that the main hiccup for the school committee is struggling with its finances. Well, take it from me, no money is ever enough. But there's always another option. There's always another way. Sit down, hash it out, find a way to help out our young minds, get back to school. I have three children in this school system. Been paying taxes for 14 years, and at some points, on multiple houses. I'm finally at the point where I get to see my child utilize the school system. Can you please put your phone down? That is so rude.
I'm sorry. It's timing, and your time is now up.
It's got to be the most rude thing.
I'm sorry.
I think we can find a little egg timer for you next time. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
Next person is Vanessa Vasquez.
Hi, my name is Vanessa, and I'd like to share how the remote-learning-only model has negatively impacted my family and beg the school committee to find a safe way to deliver quality in-person education to students, especially the younger ones. Children are a vulnerable population that oftentimes are not heard. I'm here to speak not only for my two children in the Leominster schools, but also for those kids who are in abusive and neglectful households who have no one to speak for them. The school building was their safe haven where they had love, food, friends, and education, and maybe they counted the days, the hours, to be able to return to school the next day. So what about them? I have four children. Two are in the Leominster schools. One is a first grader, one's an eighth grader. I work two jobs as a nurse, and I go to school myself. My mother retired early to help me care for my kids. English is her second language, and so is technology. With two younger children running around, she barely has time to sit and eat, and it's impossible for her to have time to sit with my children and help them with their schoolwork. My first grader took his school scissors and cut up his T-shirt during class time, and he says he was done with school, he was going to wait until high school so he could see his friends again. Today, he walked away from the computer several times during class and told my mom that the teacher said he could. My eighth grader's doing okay, which I expected, and he says we're on mute the whole time, so it's pretty boring. The school building is much more than academics. It's a way to get physical activity, foster friendships, and learn the social and emotional tools to interact and navigate this changing world of ours. Remote learning gives them a short version of the academic needs. As the governor said, districts that don't have their kids in school while they're in the green are losing a valuable opportunity to have the kids in school when it's safe to do so. So please be transparent on what the real reason is that our kids are not in school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else awaiting to address the committee? Please state your name and address for the record when you get to the microphone, please. And I'm not sure if you've heard at the end, please take a wipe and wipe the microphone down and the podium.
Of course. Cody Case, 164 Third Street, Apartment 3R. Allow me to start off by thanking the members of the school committee for your hard work during these unprecedented times. Equity in education is an extremely important issue. Equity in education is an extremely important issue, and I'd be remiss if I didn't take an opportunity to thank the committee, the committee, and especially the superintendent for having made this a priority under her tenure in recent years. Equity in education can be defined in many ways, however, with student health obviously being at the forefront of how we provide an equal and adequate education to each student. Recently, the committee has been discussing how to handle bringing students back and at what pace during COVID, with one member suggesting a rapid return to schools. Immediately, my thoughts was how can the city and district have a plan to ensure the equity of student safety and therefore their education across our school system? That would be suggesting that all of our schools are currently equipped with proper protective equipment, cleaning products, and hand sanitizer, along with safety protocols, new policies, and proper staffing. The simple answer is, while it may be politically expedient, it's not practical. However, it could be. And I therefore call on the city to access... Excuse me. I therefore call on the city to access its rainy day fund, consisting of millions of dollars, for emergency expenditures to immediately alleviate the school district and help, help the process of creating equity among our district during these times. In conclusion, I'd like to state that equity in education is a noble goal, one that can only be achieved through collaboration by this committee. And said today, we see a total lack of protocol with minimal notice and outright disrespect for fellow members.
Sorry, your two minutes are up.
Thank you for your time.
Is there anybody else wishing to address the committee at this time? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please. And before you leave, make sure you take a wipe and wipe off the microphone and podium and dispose it in the trash can, please.
Shaun Breen, 23 Benjamin Street. So I know I'm timed, so I'll talk fast, and I apologize for all that. First and foremost, thank you all for your kindergarten vote. I really, truly appreciate it as a parent of a kindergarten. In a follow-up to that actual vote, I'm highly disappointed that you wouldn't at least second a valid motion to go to third grade. I mean, at least give it a chance to be voted down, but I digress. I asked you to push forward the hybrid date to a much sooner date than November. It's kind of silly if you think about it that long. If not for everybody, then at least for elementary school, because trying to ask a high schooler to sit still versus asking a third grader to sit still, you're on the school committee, you should see the difference there. The end of the day, it is the job of the parents, the teachers, and you, the school committee, to educate our children. So I ask you to do the right thing and do your job and get these kids back in the classroom. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shaun.
If there's anybody else waiting to address the committee, they can start moving forward.
We have phone, people that called in ahead of time couldn't make it here, but have phone messages that they left. Wendy will be playing them. In the meantime, if I may, tonight's meeting is being broadcast live off Lemmonster.tv. It's streaming on www.lemonster.tv, broadcast live through Comcast Channel 99, broadcast live through Verizon Channel 383, and also on our local radio station, WLPZ 95.1. And also, if you want to take this and grab it on your phone, because you can't get near the radio, it's WW, it's www.wlpz.org, and then you can hear it through your phone.
I do want to just remind folks, while Wendy's getting ready, is that we do have another posted meeting that was previously scheduled for 6:00 PM, so when we get close to that time, we'll be adjourning. If this meeting is not concluded, the mayor has the choice of asking for it to be put on the school committee agenda or schedule another special meeting that is not in conflict.
Madam Chair, if I may be heard, I checked with the city solicitor's office today on the open meeting law, and as long as we don't start the second meeting early, we are...
There's no intention, Dean, of starting the second in early.
Excuse me, excuse me. Do I have a floor or not?
I will allow you to have the floor briefly, even though you kind of took it away from me, but go ahead.
I asked to be recognized. Am I recognized or not? Whichever.
I'm recognizing you now.
So I checked with the city solicitor's office today, Attorney Brian Riley. He says, as long as you don't start the second meeting early, you can give notice or have one of the superintendent's staff wait at that location and just let people know that we'll be running a little bit late.
I appreciate that, but we do have a guest speaker, so we're trying to start that meeting on time.
Just for the public's notification.
Wendy, if you could, go ahead.
It says as follows. Good evening, school committee and attendees. My name is Jennifer Perla, and I'm representing my eight-year-old daughter, Madeline. I want the best education for her. I am telling you now that remote learning is not working. My daughter is having a hard time focusing, learning, and getting her schoolwork done. She misses school, she misses her friends. Last week, she called herself a loser. She's eight. She's breaking down into a ball of tears, anger, and shutdown. Her emotional, mental, and social health is suffering. Back in July, the plan for remote was because of COVID-19 and out of fear that we would have a surge. Now, almost two months later, we have not had a surge, and in fact, we've had very low numbers. So much so that Governor Charlie Baker designated Lemmonster in the green. Her masked live article dated 9/23/2020, "Remote Only Model Should Only Be Used For Communities With Three Consistent Beams Of Red Designations," said Baker. With that said, why are we still remote? Why is the data from the parent survey, which shows that over 80% of parents want some sort of in-person learning, ignored? Why are the facts being ignored? The data. A new article from WHG Channel 7 today studies ranked Massachusetts among the safest states to, for schools to reopen. At the last school committee meeting on 9/21/2020, a member brought up the budget. Seems now there are not enough funds to bring students and staff back to school. I'm not an expert, but you should the finances to bring back students and staff should have already been discussed before the meeting on September 21st. Why now? Please stop with the games. Please stop using our children to get what you want. Just stop. Get them back to school. Get my Madeline back to school. With all of this said, I feel as though some members of this committee are out of touch and cannot grasp the scope of their remote decisions. Enough is enough. All committee members should be at this meeting tonight. No excuses. By not attending, it is a slap in the face to all of your constituents that voted for you and those you represent. I can only speak for myself, however, I will remember this if you choose to run again, because you will not have my vote. Thank you for your time. Jennifer Perla.
To replay, press 1. To save, press 2. To delete, Stephanie Madrigal, Glendale Ave, Lemmonster. Week after week, I have watched this committee listen to dozens and dozens of parents pour their hearts out. Many of those parents uncomfortable with public speaking, finally building up the nerve to share their story in hope that their council hears them, one after another. Week after week, real people, real challenges, real concerns. I watched area school districts heed the guidance of the Desi Commissioner and that of the governor. But Lemmonster, no. Regardless of the mass majority of the city favoring some form of in-person learning, regardless of the outpouring of cries from families desperate for options that allow them to keep their jobs and assist their child's education, regardless of the Desi Commissioner, regardless of the governor, regardless of the health metrics, a majority of our council have unfortunately put their fingers in their ears. Every time my child struggles, every time he cries, every time he melts down and refuses to turn that computer on, I think about the help he could be getting in person with his amazing team of teachers, as required in his legally binding contract, as known as an IEP. And then I grow frustrated, angry, sad, you pick the adjective. Yes. COVID rocked us of our strength, but we could have taken back our fall. Thank you. To replay, press 1. To save, press 2. To delete, press 3.
Hello, I'm calling to comment on the all-remote learning for the kindergarten. Ours remote learning is working for us, and with the survey, we chose all-remote because I feel like the children are going to get a better education than going in a few days, going out a few days. And also, too, we didn't have enough information when the survey was sent out as to what the micro hybrid was. I prefer to keep my child on remote, it keeps him safe, and it shouldn't be a one-size fits all. It should be case by case, and I don't think the children that choose remote learning should have to get a different teacher, to have to learn a whole new schedule because we chose to keep him remote. Please take this into consideration at the meeting. Thank you very much, and have a great day.
Mary Mitchell, 179 Barrington Road. Virtual learning has caused a negative impact in our family, educationally, financially, and developmentally. My third grader has been complimented on her ability to focus on a task when she was 13 months old. Since beginning virtual learning, she has been complaining of feeling fidgety and itching my skin, and has been wondering what is wrong with her. The answer is being asked to participate in six hours of virtual learning today with only a 20-minute lunch break, which is developmentally appropriate and would be difficult for most adults. In the classroom, there's physical movement between classes, specials lunch break recess, usually flexible seating. Flexible seating is not an option in our home, especially with the requirement to be at a desk or table. As well as additional... I have noticed decline in multiple skills. I believe she was tested, she would show a decline from her previous skills instead of what should have been six-month growth. This decline is in a child with no learning challenges, who was previously testing above-average for her grade level, in a supportive household with excellent internet access, and who has been dedicated to completing work. Imagine the decline with children less fortunate. My sixth grader has been participating in virtual learning, but rest complains educationally. However, she has many symptoms of increased anxiety due to the pandemic school, so she is missing interaction with her peers. She also would be better served with an in-person setting. Due to the decision to be fully remote, I had to reduce work hours to provide supervision to my children, especially on non-stru性的Friday. This has created a financial hardship for our family that was unnecessary due to the state-provided metrics in our area favoring in-person learning, at least in the hybrid model. As an essential healthcare worker, this has also resulted in a gap shortage. I'd like to... You've been earlier, you've healthcare workers are relatively expensive. Speaking of those childcare issues, hybrid models that are offering two days a week for three hours a day is not sufficient. Once children are in the building, it should be for the entire day as the exposure has already occurred. Previous choices should also be reinstated to provide... Thank you. Many other schools have started following Desi guidelines, which has led children to disadvantage. They will be behind their peers and no longer be able to look further than disparity. It's time to follow Desi guidelines and...
Wendy, the time is up.
While the cases are low, with a comprehensive...
I read the story and sent it on Enterprise this morning and wanted to comment on an online learning situation. I'm a parent, I've lived in here for four years, I've got a kindergartner in Mrs. Johnson's class at 10th Street. And for us, you know, online learning is going quite well. We're really happy, however, to hear the hybrid model is starting soon. You know, our daughter has, you know, been doing really well with kindergarten, and Mrs. Johnson is doing an excellent job. She and her agency, Pedro, have been going above and beyond in facilitating and, you know, wonderful, personable, engaging online learning. Our daughter's enjoying herself. It's wonderful to hear her learning so much already. For the most part, her classroom's been a smooth experience. It tends to be the hiccups along the way and all that, but it's gone well, but the kids need social interaction that can only be accomplished via in-person learning. So it's been sad to see her develop little to no connection with her classmates, with as well as everything's going. The two-day-a-week in-person hybrid sounds really perfect, and we're grateful that this decision's been made and hope to see it extended to the rest of the school district as well. You know, we're fortunate in our family to have the ability for our daughter to do her online learning with me at my office, where she's undisturbed by her little sister and has a room that has no good internet connection. We realize that a lot of people are not in the same boat as us. They don't have a similar situation where parents can't take their kids with them to work and really can't leave them at home either. And I do want to say, I'm the minister of the Lemmonster Church of Christ. We, and I know other churches as well, would be happy to explore options for establishing our local church building to be centers for remote learning. So that's being discussed. That's certainly an option we would like to pursue. We'd be happy to help coordinate volunteers as remote learning centers...
Wendy, that's time.
At this point, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn so we can get to our other meeting.
Is there a second? Make a second? Okay, all those... Wendy, could you please...
Excuse me, excuse me. There are no, there are no decisions being made here tonight. We're not voting on anything. So according to the open meeting law, even if there's not a quorum, so I'm going to stay here, even if there's not a quorum, we can continue on with this. So go ahead. They're going to leave, and you can continue on with the comments.
Can I make a request, then? That's not going to be a vote.
Wendy, could you please...
You can adjourn.
No.
You can adjourn.
I'm just struggling to hear the messages, and I'd love to hear them. I'm getting one word every other few words. If I could get a printout of that, it would be much easier to understand. I think it's the scivilence through the speakers, but I want to hear them, and I just, I'm not getting the full message.
Okay, I have...
So we do have a motion and a second and a floor.
Melissa, I have a stack of people who wanted to have their, their statements read into... A lot of people aren't comfortable coming to the meeting or calling in.
Perfect. If you could get that to all the committees, I would have seen...
So I'm going to, I'm going to read them. If, 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 if you're going to leave, the meeting will continue on, because we're not making any decisions, we're not taking any votes. So we will continue on with the meeting.
So, Dean, if you can make all things available to everyone...
Yes. Yeah, I will read all, I will read all of these. It'll be available through cable and also the radio.
All right. So we do have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed?
Right here.
Okay, motion carries.
There is, there is no reason that we cannot continue on for another 15 or 20 minutes on this area. We're going to a workshop. This is far more important than a workshop.
So, Dean, just to respond to that, is that you were aware of the workshop and the date since September 8th? And I did request respectfully that you reschedule the special meeting to a time that didn't conflict with an existing meeting, so that we could give it our full attention.
We have one guest coming to the workshop. We have 6,000 guests listening tonight.
Right. But you made the choice of having it a conflict.
Okay. We'll keep on with the recordings. Can you get him a little closer to the, at least, can you hear him, Brad, upstairs? Can you hear the, can you hear the telephone? Senator Tran. Dear Mr. Chairman and members of the school committees... Oh, you got more? Okay.
The most students who initially were forced by laws that protect the, for the group of students. There are many students whose requirements are not being met, and given this full remote model, there may now be additional students with added foundational needs go unchecked. While some groups are being added to in-person learning, who is the rest of the student population to consider? I am voicing a serious concern regarding the lack of metrics to address the educational model. The majority of students remain in full remote without having used the guidelines provided by Desi, the directions provided by our governor, the assessment of our superintendent, or the voice of the community. Desi clearly states, and I quote, "The school board is the legal agent of the state and must therefore fulfill both state and federal mandates. At the same time, the board must be responsive to the community it serves." There are apparently no metrics for keeping our students in full remote. We are in full remote at the mercy of the school committee by votes not substantiated with fact. This is very concerning. I worry without these metrics, we will continue to remain at the mercy of the school committee, which is time to consider a hybrid or return to full in-school education. I mean, when is it time? How can any educational option at any time possibly be soundly decided without metrics? Guidelines are an obvious component to such a serious decision-making process, and without one, simply we use votes for the type of education our students will receive at the individual will of each school committee member. These metrics should have been developed months ago, and while I may understand that so many months ago, such an idea was not at the forefront of anyone's mind, the absolute necessity of these metrics cannot be ignored. Fact-based metrics to continue full remote education is essential now. They are also essential for a vote toward any model. The school committee should not be using fear, personal beliefs, or any other emotion to decide our students' educational fate, especially when you have had, when you have and have had, the guidelines from Desi, your governor, and the CDC, and your community has voiced its concerns numerous times. Thank you for your time.
To replay, press 1.
My name is Amy Gogan, and I live at 42 Sacramento Drive. My eight-year-old son Joshua has Down Syndrome. He is in a sub-separate classroom at Johnny Appleseed School. Two minutes is not enough time to explain how remote learning for any duration does not work for my family. Joshua is supposed to have a one-to-one aide support nearly the entire school day. The function of the one-to-one is to help support the teacher. He should be getting sped teacher and one-to-one concurrently, but since we're doing this on the computer, the one-to-one has simply shifted into the role of teacher, causing me to shift into the role of one-to-one. And as you can imagine, he does not want to listen to mom. It has been a disaster. Like many families in Lemmonster, we are dual income, or at least we are trying to be. be. My employer has been patient with me through all of this, but it's only a matter of time before that patience wears thin. On Friday, I had to go into the office. My husband texted me several times. There were two main themes. Oh my God, how do you do this every day? And if I'm not his one-to-one keeping him on track, he doesn't even pay attention to her. This doesn't work. Joshua needs to have in-person instruction, full-time. If the school can do three hours per day, they can do six hours per day. There are no health-related reasons why they cannot. Think about that. Why are they going to cut off education at 12:00 p.m.? There's no reason for that. I rejected Joshua's IEP placement and requested a resolution meeting, while our complaints were ignored and nothing was resolved. Since Leominster is effectively denying my child's access to a free, appropriate public education, we were seeking outplacement. Ms. Woodford cited COVID times repeatedly and offered us four half-days. Ms. Woodford and Ms. Griffin have both cited teachers' contracts and liability as reasons why in-home supports cannot be offered. I said, okay, how about we do this at a community center? At that point, Ms. Woodford told me that she was no longer going to respond to my emails. She is refusing to speak with a parent who has legitimate concerns unless it's on a phone call with no witnesses. That is shady, and that is unacceptable. I urge you to end the nightmare and heartache and do what's right. Please get special education students back into the classroom full-time. Thank you.
To replay, press 1. To save, press 2. A new message has arrived.
Mr. Mayor, this is Kent Stone over on Pleasant Street. And I, this is the first time that I've really paid attention to some of these committees. And I am not of school-type kids, but I was very interested in just paying attention to the, the school committee. And as a taxpayer, I am appalled that they just decided to get up and leave when, as your comment was, 6,000 people. You're absolutely right, Dean. And this is, these people are just atrocious on how they're dealing with this. So anyways, I just wanted to voice my opinion. 6178...
That it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Now, those were those that called in and left two-minute messages. And just to remind everybody, there's another meeting that's going to start at 6 o'clock of the school committee. It's a workshop. There is one guest coming from the Mass Association of School Committees, and it has been cleared with the city solicitor that that meeting could start at 6:15, it could start at 6:30, it could start at 7 o'clock. I just want to, I've, there are a number of emails that came in, and, and I think I wouldn't be doing justice if I didn't read them. This is a special meeting, and how did this all happen? At last week's school committee meeting, there was a, on the agenda was to have kindergarten students begin attending school on a hybrid. I made a motion to approve that, but to also extend that motion from kindergarten to also include at least first grade, second grade, third grade, and even fourth. That motion would have allowed us to have conversation about that. That's all a motion is. It's just to allow us to have conversation based on that motion. I didn't even get a second motion, a, a second on that motion, which would allowed, would have allowed us conversation. So we could have discussion about adding first and second and third and fourth grade students to, to hybrid. I realized that at that particular time, the frustration of parents, all along, parents were told, if the numbers are down in the community, we would be going to hybrid. If we got assistance from the federal and state government for PPEs, which is personal protection equipment, and we did in, in the tune of millions, that we would be going back to school. So a survey was sent out in the community, and as you heard tonight, the vast majority wanted in-person learning, some in-person learning. They wanted options. They had just experienced the whole spring go by them, and of no fault to the teachers, and make it very clear tonight that no one's bashing teachers. In fact, we're thanking them and acknowledging their hard work. They've really had a difficult time. It's been tough for them as well. But I realized at that meeting that this could go on forever, and I've heard from so many parents. Now, not everybody's a public speaker. Some people have trouble with the English language, uncomfortable with that. We had a translator here tonight. But parents were shocked to hear the results of the petition of the survey and then have the school committee by a vote of five to four, vote for remote only, that being the only option. And I realized by not even being able to get a second and have conversation at the last school committee meeting, that I'm not sure how much longer this can go. And I thought hard and long about this and, and decided that it might be time to consider this as a public health crisis in the community. What I've heard from so many parents, that I could hardly walk out my door at my house without having so many... I mean, I think pretty much everybody's weighed in on this. This isn't a few people voicing concerns. This is, this is hundreds, maybe thousands of people voicing their concerns about special needs students, about students that are being left home alone. Parents who wouldn't come here tonight because they said, if they find out I'm leaving my kids home alone, they may report me to DSS, and if I don't go to work, I may not have a job, and if I can't go to work, I may not be able to pay my rent. And October 17th, they'll lift in the auditorium, I may get evicted. I've heard the stories over and over. I have two and three children, or one child. They cannot learn remotely, and it's not the teacher's fault. There are no other options. It's either remote learning or it's not. And I really had to make a tough decision. So tonight, I call this meeting a special meeting, Section 2 of the City Charter. 2-6 of the City Charter allows the mayor to call special meetings, allows the mayor to speak to the school committee on any issue, on any subject matter, on any issue at any time. And so I call this special meeting in hopes that they would sit here and listen to the fact that this is probably a public health crisis here in a community that is a gateway community, a working-class community, and there aren't a whole lot of options, and we haven't done so as a school committee. Now, mind you, our rates are extremely low. The weather's been good. We are surrounded by other communities doing hybrid, some all. They've used the excuse of there's not enough funding. Not only did the state give them what they gave them last year, but I applaud the state. They gave them an additional $1.7 million, plus COVID money, plus CARES Act money, plus the city not only gave the school department what they got last year, but gave them another $1.1 million minimum. So where do we stand? Tonight, we have to make a decision. And I'm going to read, because these folks took time to, to write something to the school committee, and I'll take the time to read it. Again, as a reminder, the school committee left here to go to a workshop where there's one person coming for this meeting, which could have started at 6:30, could have started at 7, could have started at 7:30. It's a workshop. This, to me, is a priority. This is the most important thing happening in our community. Parents contact me, come to my office, start me in tears. They don't beat up the teachers. They're not critical of them. They applaud the teachers' work and their commitment, but they need options, and they haven't got any. And they don't see any of the foreseeable future. But all of a sudden, since we called this special meeting tonight, now there's talk about maybe, maybe going to a hybrid system in November. And then we've got Thanksgiving, and then the flu, and then we've got holiday vacation. And so what kind of a second quarter do we really have? And kids are falling behind. So at the conclusion of this meeting, after hearing all of this, all of everybody's comments, I will determine whether or not this is, in my opinion, a public health crisis. We will move immediately. We've had discussions with the Boys and Girls Club. We will immediately, we will immediately come to terms with them on, on logistics about opening up the Boys and Girls Club during the day for students, teachers, children, public safety children, your children, students that can't learn remotely, that may need some tutoring and some help, those that are left alone, will have somebody to be in their presence, somebody around them during the daytime to guide them. And we will fill up the Boys and Girls Club, and then we'll move to other municipal buildings. And hopefully, the state will give me permission to go to use your buildings, to go into school buildings that you pay for, and use those buildings to run, to run remote learning academies. So the students are safe, and they're learning, and they're not falling behind. So let me read a letter from the senator. Senator Tran. Dear Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, and it might be asked, why can we continue to have this meeting? Because we're not taking any votes. We're not taking any votes tonight, so we can continue to have this meeting. There's no quorum necessary. Dear Mr. Chairman and members of the school committee, I hope all of you are doing well in the challenge, in these challenging times. I had every intentions to join you tonight, but due to a schedule conflict, please accept this submission as my remarks. I write to you with grave concerns that the voice and the needs of the people in the city of Leominster are being ignored. In this case, 80%, 80% of the parents and 72% of the teachers, as well as healthcare professionals from the Department of Public Health and officials at the Department of Secondary and Elementary Education, who all have indicated and recommended that children should be involved in some kind of in-person learning. In addition, the mental and physical well-being of our children depend on in-person learning, and with the absence, they will suffer long-term health issues. The children are our future. Their education, mental and physical well-being should not be used to further politically-driven agendas. Five school committee members with little to no experience or expertise in this matter do not know more than the collective group that I have mentioned. Their vote for complete remote learning hurts the most, the disadvantaged students and the students of color. The people have spoken. For the sake of our children in the community, you must revisit your decision to go remote because the data and the facts do not support it. Sincerely, Dean A. Tran, State Senator. Michelle Henry. My statement is what I've told, what I've been told over and over, children need to have current physical before starting school. Now there is, is causing, now this is causing a huge issue. I've enrolled my son after moving back to Leominster from Florida, and since it's taken a while to get school records, he's now, because of this policy, is now going to be three weeks behind because of the rules already in place. There should be something in place allowing for students, children, to be able to start on time. COVID is not going away anytime soon, and my son will suffer, and I'm angry about this. We are remote, and there should be no way that he can't start school. I can't control doctors' offices and how fast they send records and doctors' appointments available. And getting phone calls from the school department telling me how one week, two weeks behind, that is not right. Thank you for your time. Michelle Henry, Water Street, Leominster. Myron Scornetti, and she says, my comments, we hope the first, second, and third graders can be included in the mini-hybrid model. That will allow some students to return to school for in-person instruction in October. The younger students seem to have a much hotter time to focus online learning for extended periods of time. Also, the younger students lack the emotional maturity to deal with problems arising from learning remotely. At the same time, extremely important foundational skills are developed in the early years of elementary school. I worry that remote learning isn't as effective for this group as it is for older siblings, friends, and that younger students are more severely impacted by the situation than other students. This is based on our personal experience. We have two remote learners, a second grader and a fifth grader. Felicia Santiago. I'm a parent to three children in the Leominster public school systems, and two of my children have IEPs. My children want to and are legally entitled to learn, but how can they learn when I'm struggling to balance two children who have significant needs by myself? When one of my children needs assistance, the other who needs my 100% full support misses out on the important learning. Even though teachers and staff are doing their very best to support me and my children, it is still a struggle every day. In just the first week of school, have dealt with meltdowns, self-injurious behaviors, task avoidance, refusal to do schoolwork, and my children crying and saying how much they hate remote learning. Is this my children's fault? No. Is this my fault? No, definitely not. Is this the teachers and therapists' fault? No. Teachers and therapists are trying to balance work, life, and home themselves, support parents and students who are struggling, all while being streamlined by the district who wants them to work miracles. I'm emotionally burnt out, and so are your staff. This is not okay or acceptable, and to blame lies on the school committee board for favoring remote learning and screwing over parents, students, especially special ed students and teachers, all the while expecting parents to be built into teachers and therapists when we do not have the knowledge or the experience to do so. This is unfair to students, staff, and parents, leaving everybody at a disadvantage that affects the students disproportionately when it does not have to be this way. The committee owes the students, especially special education students, better than the optimum that was forced upon them... I'm sorry, better than the option that was forced upon, upon them. Most are dissatisfied with the series of decisions that have been made, and it feels like concerns are falling on deaf ears and on the far and the few occasions that we are given the opportunity to speak. Do right, do right for the students of Leominster. They deserve it. And that's Felicia Santiago, 189 Spruce Street. It's one thing to monitor the safety of the constituent oxygen, and it's, it's another throw to other unterms like inconvenient when it comes to doing your job that you signed up for, that you took an oath to represent the constituents which agreed to place you before there, believing you had the best interest at their heart. This letter is addressed to the committee. Let me tell you what is inconvenient. Watching a little girl with Down syndrome go through depression. Those two do not go in the same sentence, yet here I am having to put them together because this is the fact of the matter. Watching her cry usually is devastation. When she grabs her backpack, and I have to attempt to explain to her again, because this is an everyday occurrence, that she can't go to school. Watching her regress in academics because in two weeks she agreed to sit in front of the computer twice for 30 minutes top. So far, my child was willing to physically sit for one hour out of 60 hours of instruction. The only reason she sat was I gave her slime, so at least maybe she might sit and listen. She really wants to go outside and play anymore. She can't stop eating. She is not sleeping. Her mother, working all day, all night, Saturdays and Sundays in her regular full-time job, remotely so that we can put food on the table and make sure I've met the demand working hours required. There are times I've been on conference calls at midnight. Yep, you read that right. Waiting for a minute to shower, waiting for a minute to eat something, waiting for when I can spend playtime with the kids, waiting for some positive change in the current situation. So pardon me for my bluntness, but I don't want to hear any school committee members' excuses that it might be an inconvenient time, because quite frankly, we have all experienced a real inconvenience by the unalignment of decisions, decision-making of the committee to the wishes of the taxpayers' constituents, some of us more than others. I would, I would love nothing more than to address the committee in person, however, due to my irregular work schedule and our financial close. I have to work until who knows what time tonight, but I'm listening. I want you to feel through my words tonight what we feel, sorrow, helplessness, heartbreak. I've attached a photo of what she does every day instead of remote learning, then one of where she is happy. You have my permission to share both photos with the committee and the public. Let those sink in. And here's the other photo of her sleeping. Thank you. That was powerful. Thank you, Diana Payne. Dear Superintendent Paula Deacon and Special Ed Director Kim Woodford, this letter serves as notification of our ongoing concerns regarding the treatment of lack of proper services being delivered to special education students under the individualized education plans, also known as IEP. An IEP is a legal binding document under the, under United States federal law, the Individuals with Disabilities Act, and the Mass General Law, Chapter 1, I'm sorry, 71B, which ensures the district's access to a fair and appropriate education. IEP services and limits to public school systems have essentially been disregarded since May, March of 2020. What is equally alarming is the lack of adequate plan to addressing, delivering the services legally mandated by the students' IEPs. We have been patient, but much like Governor Bacon, Commissioner O'Reilly... but much like Governor Bacon, Commissioner O'Reilly, we expect these students to be prioritized and returned to the classroom setting immediately. We expect and demand that a plan be presented at the October 5th Leominster School Committee meeting. The plan should include returning all students to classroom settings for at least four full days per week by November 5th. We do understand the desire for deep cleaning of the school building interiors once a week. We expect a copy of this plan by September 30th, 2020, prior to the agenda being posted on the following day. In the event we are not in receipt of an adequate plan to address these issues, then we intend to file formal complaints with Russell Johnson, Ph.D., State Director of Special Education and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. The reasons for our positions are compelling. Leominster is a low-risk community based on the health metrics established by Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and we no longer can use COVID times as an excuse to avoid providing legally mandated services to our most vulnerable students. Teachers' unions should not trump IEP services. Leominster public schools are in violation of over 1,000 students' IEP placements and delivery of services. The current plan to return approximately 165 special ed students to our mini hybrid on October 5th, 2020 does not remedy these violations unless teams have been convened and accepted the new placement. Simply put, this has not happened. The mini hybrid only encompasses a small population of over 1,000 students on IEPs in Leominster. In addition, the results of these violations could cost the district millions of dollars in the form of outplacements, compensatory services, lawsuits, and civil rights violations, all of which are unnecessary if the district resumes upholding all the IEPs with in-person instruction and lawful delivery of services. Please do not hesitate. Please do not mistake our resolve in this very important matter. Very truly yours, Bonnie Budd, Leominster Special Education Parent Advisory Council Chairperson, Stephanie Madrigal, Maria McKenna, Amy Golden, M E D R N C D D N, Caitlin Volpe, Rob Volpe, and Frank Cohen. Dear school committee members, I'm writing in regards to remote learning and the desire to see the kids back in school, at least hybrid. Although I am happy that kindergarten, ELL students, and special needs students, and CTEI students get to go back to school, I feel you don't understand the impact remote learning is having on other students who remain at home, especially high school students. These students are wanting to go to college. How do you expect them to fulfill their dreams of going to their college of choice when they can't take a competitive class schedule compared to students that are in-person or hybrid and didn't have to have their schedule cut from seven classes to five? Remote learning will affect GPAs, and not all students do well in remote platform, and this will negatively impact the colleges that they can apply to. You, as the school committee, have only proven that you don't care about the students of Leominster. Kids being left home alone, students suffering from depression, suicidal additions, parent mental health, and increased drug use. You never give these a thought. School is a safety zone for many students. But I guess what we can expect from a group of nine people that can't even make it through a meeting without yelling at each other and acting unprofessional is disrespectful. It is clear some of you have your own agenda and don't care about the students, and are just trying to make a point by sacrificing our children. Why does one of my daughter's classes have over 30 students in it? Where is the money to bring back teachers and aides? It's disgusting that the citizens of Leominster have to go so far as to write letters to request an audit in order to get any answers. Have you, school committee, gone and sat in the classroom while the teacher teaches 25 to 30 students? Have you gone to constituents' homes to sit through what it's like to have multiple children, remote learning, while you're home working or tending to a younger, non-school-aged child? It's time for the school committee to grow up, to act like adults, and finally do what's right for our children. Lynn Cumming, Leominster. My name is Amy Kreisik. My son Zachary Kreisik is a freshman at the high school. I am concerned about remote learning and emotional well-being of my son. Unfortunately, I have to work, so he is home alone all day by himself. I understand that he's a high school student and should be able to be home alone, but the social isolation is causing him to regrow. He has autism. It was starting to better with socialization, but I've noticed how much the lack of socialization is affecting him. I work in the healthcare system and see many people back at work, so I am for them going back to school. I don't feel they are getting the full education they deserve. There are many kids out there that won't ask for help, so they will continue to fall behind. The private schools have been in-person since the beginning of the year, and I feel the current education plan is doing a disservice to our children. Travis Rektler. I hope that's correct. To whom it may concern, my name is Travis, and I have a five-year-old attending remote learning kindergarten out of Fallbrook Elementary School. He's very fortunate that I'm able to keep working through these difficult times. However, there are many who have not been so lucky. I'll cut to the chase, as I know everybody's time is valuable. The Leominster School District is failing its community. Parents, teachers, and students, especially the ones who need the most attention, are younger and special needs children. I've sat next to my five-year-old while attending remote learning and have heard profanity from students in the background. I've seen the frustration of teachers trying to control her class, and I have felt the frustration staying awake 36-plus hours to make sure my child is prepared and behaving in class. We don't need remote learning center. When we already have one, it's called school. Stop trying to invent the wheel, let the children wear their mask, and send them back to school. Thank you, Travis. Dear school committee members, My name is Chris Arario. I reside at 24 Torrey Circle in Leominster. I previously had a child in Leominster school system for 12 years. I also served in the Leominster School Committee from 2002 to 2011. Dear school committee members, Mayor Mazarello and Superintendent of Schools, We live in a very unique and extremely challenging time. All of us have been affected, one way or another, with the current pandemic. We want what is best for our families, our community, and our country during these uncertain times. Our children should be the center of our attention during the pandemic. This disruption to learning, social interaction, normalcy, I am certain will have long-lasting effects as they grow older. I hope it is not too drastic, but time will tell. As school committee members, you have an obligation to ensure every child in the Leominster school system has the opportunity to learn the best possible environment with your resources that are available. Now is the time to listen. Listen to your constituents. Listen to the parents. Listen to the students. Listen to the teachers. Don't be passive and wait for feedback to come to you. Go into the community and actively engage and listen. Students, parents, teachers, need options. You must provide alternatives other than just remote learning. It is not working for some families, and students are at risk. Families are at breaking point, and community is asking for your help. This is a crisis, and immediate action is required on your part. I urge you to actively debate this evening, and I'll leave with a plan to improve our learning environment for the students of the Leominster public school systems. Please do not delay this important decision. Stay well, stay safe, and thanks for the opportunity to be heard. My best and sincere wishes, Chris. Joanne Anderson. As a caregiver, while parents are at work, I find remote learning for her not working. She's four years old, enrolled at Bennett due to some issues. We go on at 12:15 till 12:45. It is to resume at 1:45. There are supposed to be five children. We have three. The first week, second week, we lost one who did not return. A granddaughter will not go back on for second session. I feel her needs are not met at all. This is due to not being in-person. Teachers are trying their best. We are wasting their time. Meanwhile, these children will never catch up. Failures in the making, Joanne Anderson, Avon Street, Leominster. Hello, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I need to say that although in-person school cannot be risk-free, social interaction is really important for good education. I hope Leominster will do everything it can to ease and enrich students' remote learning experience. I'm the mother of twin fifth graders. My husband and I withdrew from Northwest Public Elementary in March due to COVID-19 concerns. We intend to re-enroll at least one of the children in in-person school, but only when the transmission rates remain low or when a vaccine becomes available. It is not a financial burden for us. Spring remote lessons from Northwest enabled my children to see familiar faces. This motivated one of my children to apply himself to his homework. Otherwise, spring was very unproductive. Not knowing what to expect in the fall, we enrolled both children in TEC Connections Academy, a charter virtual school created by Person's Company. It has been excellent due to its teachers, course design, and ways of keeping students and parents interested and engaged. TECA is a good one that one of my kids has asked to remain in virtual school for the next seven years. The other would prefer social life of the Leominster public school system, would probably do better emotionally with in-person school. So happy I am with the charter school. It is not a panacea. Northwest Elementary should emulate much of the features of virtual school if it had the resources to embellish its current remote program. This personnel account goes to show that as committed as I am to avoiding exposure to the Wuhan coronavirus, I can't ignore the importance of social connection through in-person school. Equally important is the unique way that teachers and school staff engage in students and keep them interested in learning. The Leominster School District can benefit from resources that will allow teachers to use technology to introduce students to various medias for lessons. Good luck to the school district, A.B. Albert, Walnut Street. I can go on and on. And let me just repeat that the school committee adjourned to go to a workshop. They have invited a member of the Mass Association of School Committees to their workshop. And under the open meeting law, we're not taking any votes tonight, so we can allow the meeting to continue on. Also, under the open meeting law, it would not be legal for them to have delayed their meeting till 6:30 or 7:00 or 7:30. But this is the potential of a public health crisis. And as you can see, I continue to read each of these into the public record, which is cable TV, LTV, as well as live over the radio station, as well as streaming. Remember, no one is criticizing the teachers. We are thanking them for their hard work. No one is suggesting that we send teachers back to school that don't feel safe. No one is suggesting that we send students back to school if there's a pre-existing condition. And no one is suggesting that if a student is doing well, remote learning, that we force them to go back to school. What we're speaking to tonight in the health crisis here is students being left home alone, families having to make a decision on whether to go to work or to stay home with their students, with their children. Students that cannot learn remotely, they've tried, and they're falling back. And also our special needs students. Those are the criteria. And so after this meeting, I have heard, I can't tell you how many people have shared their stories. Not all through, some through social media, some through personal phone calls. I can't tell you the places, including following me almost into the bathroom here to tell me their story. That's the level of interest in this, and parents demanding more options. I think they were surprised when the school committee took the vote 5 to 4. They were expecting some in-person learning, more of a hybrid, since our numbers were some of the lowest of any gateway community in the state. The governor, Lieutenant Governor, DESI, Department of Public Health, everyone has gone on record of saying, if you're in that green zone, even yellow, but we're in the green zone, our numbers continue to be low. They may go up a little, and then they go down, but we're a city of 43,000 people, manufacturing community, middle-class community, where people have to work. And this is what prompted this meeting. At the last school committee meeting, if you're just joining us, the last school committee meeting, I had proposed to have students in kindergarten, first, second, third, and maybe even fourth, return into hybrid. It didn't get a second, which mean not only could we not vote on it, we couldn't even discuss it. And that's why we're here tonight on the city charter, 2-6 of the city charter. It allows the mayor to call a special meeting. It allows the mayor to address the school committee on any subject matter at any time. And that's what brought us here tonight. Tomorrow, I will follow up with the Board of Health Director, the Emergency Management Director, and we will continue our discussions with the Boys and Girls Club of America, located here in the city of Leominster, where we begin quickly, quickly, to try to open up as many seats at the Boys and Girls Club as we possibly can. We will look at other municipal buildings, and then we will attempt to talk to DESI and see if we can get permission to open up some of the school buildings. In some of the school buildings, we would offer day programs for them, tutoring programs for them. We would offer guidance to those students who are having a difficult time learning. We will have people there for those students that are being left alone, so that would allow our unemployment rate to drop here in the city of Leominster, because people can go back to work and not have to worry about what's going on in their home. I know what my mother would say about leaving her three boys home. I know what my mother would say about leaving her three boys home. She could give you plenty of stories, because it's happened. And we would like to see, you know, those programs for remote learning academies/centers opened around the city and in the schools for teachers, staff members, for those in public safety. I hear from a number of families who both, both parents work in public safety, for those that can't leave their, you know, again, can't leave their job. So that is the purpose of the meeting tonight, to give the public a chance to weigh in on this. I think all you have to do is look at social media, where people feel a little more at ease about sharing their opinions. We heard people who called in and left testimony. There is still another stack here, and I will continue to read those. And I don't know at this particular point, if anybody has any questions, I don't mind answering them. I'm going to take a swig of water, and I will continue to read these until they're all read. And I think it's important to be here tonight. I think this is critical. There's one person coming in as a guest for the next meeting for the school committee, and there are thousands waiting for action to be taken by their city. And I sit here tonight as the mayor of the city. I also sit as a school committee representative. It was very clear in the charter that they wanted the mayor, whoever the mayor was at the time, to sit on the school committee, to let them know the financial conditions of the city, to act, to let them know the sorts of things that the mayor is hearing throughout the city, not just from the schools. And it's pretty apparent at this particular point that we've heard, I've listened, and it's pretty clear. And at the end of the night, we'll make our decision. I'll report back to the Board of Health tomorrow, and also the Emergency Management Director to the state, to DESI, and also the Department of Public Health through the state, the governor's office, and to the school committee. Are there any questions thus far? I don't, I mean, we're adjourned for the school committee meeting, but this can continue on, because there are no decisions. There is, we weren't asking the school committee to make any decisions tonight, and two committees, it looks like two or three members didn't show, and the rest left to go to the workshop at six o'clock at the High School Meteor Center. This was, this was, she, she, this caller was on when the school committee got up and left. And she asked that I read this into the record. I will. My name is Deborah Tater, and I'm a resident of Lummister. I would like to voice my opinion and share how this unfounded decision of 100% remote learning has affected my child and our family. I'm a parent of an 11-year-old son who's starting the sixth grade. I'm a public safety essential employee who works full-time. Since you have decided that our children do not require adequate education and that their mental well-being is insignificant, I will explain to you how this has been a hardship to us. Due to time constraints, and we've asked everybody to keep it to two minutes, this will not even scratch the surface. My child expresses disappointment with himself, getting bored and losing interest in this remote model. He struggles to stay motivated and feels that this is pointless. He craves the social interaction with his teachers and friends. This is so disheartening for me to watch, and I'm certain it is for many parents. My job is not conducive to me working at home. I struggle trying to divide my time between helping him with the schoolwork and doing my job. His dad lives several towns away, and we are constantly shuffling him back and forth from home to work. There is a realistic possibility that I will need to quit my job after 15 years, which is going to be having effects in so many components of our life. We would not be in this situation if the school committee did not have their underhanded vote on July 30th for 100% remote learning. It is my opinion that two of the school committee members have had no business even participating in the vote, as it would relate to a change in working conditions for their immediate family members. Additionally, the other three that voted for 100% remote should have been removed for incompetence and no confidence. They decided to completely ignore the parent and teacher surveys, the American Pediatrics Association guidance, and the governor's guidance. Our children are the true victims, whether it being from not getting a proper education, being held socially captive by some of the school committee members, or possibly affected by their parents losing their jobs, they are the victims. To the school committee members who voted 100% remote with no evidence to support your decision, you should be ashamed of yourself for holding our children back in exchange for your political interest. This is far beyond what words can even explain. This will most likely result in a huge education inequity of the Lummister schoolchildren, who will fall further behind other school systems, who are either hybrid or fully engaged in person. Signed, Deborah Tater. This message was interrupted by the committee leaving, she says. Any questions? Nothing? I'll just keep going? Yes. I just want to take a swig of water, so I'm using you. You're going to go to the microphone. Or just speak loudly, it's okay. I'm sorry? Okay.
I won't touch it. I'm really struggling to, let's start off this way. I've learned a lot about Lummister politics, more than I ever thought I ever would. I just want to get this straight. The city cuts a check to the school committee, and then nothing's done. There's no accountability. I don't understand the checks and balances of this. I have no idea who oversees the school committee. You can't appeal any decision they make. I've told you to go to DESI, then DESI says, reach out to your senators and representatives. I think at some point, we've got to revisit this, that the school committee has too much power, that there is checks and balances in government, and there is no check here. They're just reckless.
What are the things that I hear over and over is, what are the metrics? What is the criteria? And this has been asked of the school committee, and this has not been taken up. I've asked it. What is the criteria for opening schools? Is it, as Mr. Cohen said earlier tonight, I think he spoke eloquently about this in detail, what is and are the criteria for opening schools? So we can all follow along, so we can, you know, if it's the weather, it's the weather, if it's, and again, we have millions, the school department was given millions in PPEs to make sure that we hire, you know, we have hand sanitizers, so that we have, you know, protective wear and demisters. And remember, on July 30th, when it was asked of the superintendent whether or not we were ready to go hybrid, and you can, I think the record reflects, the answer was yes, we were ready. And so now that it was voted down, then the parents, I think, asked and demanded, well, what is the criteria? So people were allowed to call in through these various apps, like Google and, and what's the other one, sort of Google and, my brain just slipped in here, and Zoom. And everybody's just allowed two minutes, but there were no answers from the school committee at the end of the night. So everyone was weighing in on it, expecting that people were going to address their concerns, but they never were addressed. There is no matrix thus far. There is no way for anybody to follow along on what is the criteria? If it's not low numbers and good weather and the ability to open windows, and again, there were some ear quality issues that were being addressed, then what is it? Is it just subjective? Is it the state? Is it Department of Public Health? Is it the Association of Pediatrics? What is it? And nobody, to this date, has been told that, and I think that's part of the frustration. My name is Natalia Watson, Lexington Circle. I want to thank the teachers and staff for everything that they're doing. Teachers and staff have responded to emails quickly and very helpful. Teachers holding classes face-to-face, much better experience than before. Like most, we have had issues with Chromebooks, and we took a break from using them, since my children keep getting kicked out, and we were missing part of it on class time and get logged out. One of the issues I'm having is when some teachers dismiss class every early for the day to have students work on the rest of the assignment. Some days, my children do work at that time, other times, they feel that they can do work assignments at a later time. Even if the teacher was done with the lesson, with the lesson, the class should stay and work on the class work or finish up some of the assignments like in actual school. That prevents any possible miss work, and the students stay on schedule. Some students need that constant schedule. Second issue, tutors not checking in with students and services on IEPs, 504-like Guidance Council, School Adjustment Councilers, and emails not enough. An appointment should be made with students during, since at times, students don't always read those emails and may not respond. I know my youngest son hasn't had teachers or tutors reaching out to him. I feel like some students might think it's a free block, but it was supposed to be a work block for schoolwork and check-ins. There isn't any one besides the parent, if they are at home monitoring the student, to use this time to work on upcoming assignments. The way the day is structured, students shouldn't have homework, since they are giving plenty of time during the day to complete it. However, this is not always the case, since time management skills may be an issue in accountability. Thank you. My name is Melissa Morales. I ran across this article in The Sentinel about the meeting and school classes. I have a child in the high school, and I would love for her to have in-person classes, but I shared the article with people I know in the area, and none of them want to send their kids back to schools. Is it possible to send out another survey? Yes. All you have to, I think all we have to do is ask tonight, and ask these questions. What school does your children attend? What grade are they in? Would you send them back if the school went back to hybrid? Would you send them to school if they returned altogether? I think the responses might help to get a number, to get a number of people at in town with wanting them to return. I just wanted to send my opinion. Thank you, guys, for all you do for our children. Thank you. Melissa Morales, Bainbridge Street, Lummister. Kaiser Gorinson? Is that correct? Did I say her name right? I'm sorry? It says Kaiser Gorinson. Kate, for easy pronunciation, Gorinson. My address is Wells Court, Lummister. As a parent, I'm really concerned about my child's education this year. You're already aware that remote model is not working for everybody. It definitely doesn't work for my family. As parents, we've been, we've been writing letters to you, asking about giving us more choices for a few months now. You ignored all of them and send robotic responses. As a parent, I know better what fits my child. By ignoring my voice, you are showing lack of professionalism and prove that you are not fit for the job. Tonight, I want clear answers from each one of you on the way you base your decisions on school openings. It is based on metrics provided by DESI and government, scientists and doctors, question mark, on strictly political or based on your personal feelings. As parents, we need answers. Wander Lechwise? My son is a 10th-grade student this year at Lummister High School. He is a student with ADHD and has issues with his executive functioning skill. He receives assistance at school per his IEP plan. I am not home every day with him as I have to work. You would assume a 15-year-old could go to classes and attempt to do his homework on his own, but this is not the case with my son. He does not get woken up and given meds every day. He does get woken up and given meds every day. I check on him from time to time from work to make sure he is online. However, he is highly distracted nonetheless. He won't always attempt his homework assignments until I am home and in front of him. This is very frustrating, as I work all day and teach at night. He's okay with navigating Google Classroom on his own, but feel he is not smart enough or that he isn't as smart as his peers. I've already gotten an email from one of his teachers stating that he isn't engaging, isn't as engaged in class as he should be. I'm beside myself, as I don't understand how much more I can do to help him to stay in front of that computer. So as you can see, my child, like many others, needs to be in school in front of a teacher. He would just sleep all day if he could. He has been out of school for six months. He yearns to be with his friends and to be in the classroom. Also, my concern is, why are there two people on the school committee that are allowed to vote when they have a relative that works for the public schools? Isn't that a conflict of interest? Thank you. We are getting to the end, but I will read the rest of them. Thank you for hearing this comment. I'm an educator in the Lummister public school system. We have all heard countless times that kids need to be in school. I don't, I do understand that this is a real, that this is the ideal situation for everybody, but I caution everyone to not get caught up with theoretical ideas or models, but to take a look at the reality of the Lummister public school system is working with. I long for the good old days of meeting my students in person, being able to build strong relationships with them. I miss greeting them at the door and funny conversations that we have. I miss being able to look at their work and give them a quick comment or support. Remote learning is hard. It's hard for parents, it's hard for teachers, and it's hard for the students. Every person is doing the absolute best that they can to make positive learning experiences for the students. I would, however, like to point out that our staffing levels at our current funding levels are not likely to be able to support a comprehensive hybrid model at this time. I would like to think that we could do it, but the reality is that the staff are stretched so thin that teaching remotely is almost insurmountable obstacle as it is. When we add another layer of difficulty upon already bare-bones infrastructure, I feel it will topple. We have heard the numbers time and time again about the reductions in staff and the rehiring numbers. What seems to be missing now is really playing out with students. Just one building is down, three special educators. The caseload of special education students has not dropped, but the number of teachers by about 30%. That same building has lost a dean, that same building has lost a guidance council, or that same building has lost a specialist. That same building has lost three core teachers, forcing three-person teams and many teachers to take on extra classes outside their certification. It is not clear to me how many teachers' assistants have been lost, but that group has been disseminated. These are all dedicated professionals that are not present to help students, even virtually. If we, if we want to push hybrid model through to really help reach the kids, we're really going to need staff to be hired. We cannot safely and appropriately educate the students until these essential staff positions, without these essential staff positions. There is also a lot of finger pointing and blaming when it comes down to the budget. I can honestly, I can honestly no longer care whose fault it is or who it is to blame. I just know that this is impacting the students in a way that is not always clear as when information is presented in these meetings. The reality is that children of Lummister are not getting enough from our schools, because we don't have the proper staff to provide it. Please, I implore the committee to push the increase in the staffing to the same level as last year, at the very least. Thank you for your time. And this was Paul Rowe, Maynard. Regina Lawrence from Lancaster Street. I work second shift, so it's hard to get up and make sure homework is done and make sure my daughter logs in every morning. Then I say, I'm going to, I'm going to lay in the recline for a little bit, and if you need any help, come get me. Trying to get housework done is sometimes not easy. My daughter, my daughter's dad will walk in the house 10 minutes after remote learning is done. He has not learned the whole remote learning, so if he needs help on homework, she has to wait for me. Mindy Spar, Ballard Court. Hello, my name is Mindy. I have a son in the third grade that needs to be in school right now. She has an IEP and, it says she has an IEP. I have a son in the third grade that needs to be in school right now. She has an IEP. He's already behind, I think she meant to say he's, already behind in reading and remote learning, and is an absolute torture for him. Every day, him and I are fighting each other, just so we can sit down and do the work. This homeschooling is not good for either one of us. He cries at least three times a week and tells me every day that he just wants to go back to school. I would also like to add that he does have ADHD and anxiety. Thank you, Mindy. Heather Conti. We have three children in the Lummister public school system. One 7th grader that has been in LEAP since 3rd grade, he has missed a semester of LEAP, now which is a disservice to him, and all of those other students that have excelled in and participated in LEAP for the past few years. He's bored, losing interest in his subjects that used to excite him and becoming disenchanted with school in general. Our 3rd grader has ADHD and IEP and goes to speech. He has been having many outbursts and which can be contributed to the stress of extended screen time. One of the ways we have managed his ADHD without medication is by limiting his screen time, which was on the recommendation of his pediatrician. Remote learning is not an ADHD-friendly environment. He is regressing on social habits and his speech issues, as well as the remote learning environment. ADHD, IEP, children that need extra reading, writing, help, and are being left behind, period. Our 1st grader hates school. Her experience of kindergarten starts off great, started off great, and she would be sure to love school and follow in her brother's footsteps of doing well, but as excited as she tried to be, to be entering a number grade, as she was referred to, the remote setting has been disappointing for her, to say the least. It's a fight each morning to get her to sign on. The daily struggles of tears, outbursts, and disenchantment have ruined school for our children, and I know we are not alone. And these struggles, remote learning has done loads of damage to our family life and in their school life. Hybrid in November isn't good enough. These children need sooner and better. This is Heather and Chris Lammerow from Jamestown Road, Lummister. We are getting there. I'm trying. But they're important. Hi, this is a letter to the school committee. I would like to ask that the following be read to the committee. I would like to thank the teachers, principal, staff, superintendent, and school board for everything they're doing, trying to make remote learning work. It is my hope that schools will be open fully or a hybrid model as soon as possible and safe. I am disappointed that the city of Lummister did not budget more money for schools, especially during this critical time. To answer your question about how remote learning is going, I spoke to my son and some of his friends who are seniors at Lummister High School. While they think it is a lot better than it was in the spring, and they appreciate the teachers and what they're trying to do, how successful the class is to remote learning depends on the teacher. Here is some of the feedback, along with suggestions for your consideration. Some teachers are using technology very well. The kids pointed out one teacher as a great example in that maybe he could share with other teachers his methods. Other teachers acknowledge then that they're struggling, trying to find better ways. Suggestion, if not already done, have weekly team meetings for teachers and tech support representatives to exchange ideas and what's working for them, and get the ideas from tech support and what tech availability to help them achieve what they want to do. Have a teacher tech team by subject. Some teachers are live-streaming themselves writing on whiteboards. The kids can't see the whiteboard clearly, which makes, which may be due to the teacher's Wi-Fi and camera being poor quality. Suggestion, math teachers and other teachers who need to have, to hand-write their lessons could be provided with a digital pen to use. Some with, some work with a specific pad, iPad, or laptop, others can be used universally. The city needs to provide more funding to schools to pay for these desperately needed supplies, as well as for teachers to be able to upgrade their home Wi-Fi if they are expected to teach at home. The Wi-Fi at Lummister High School would likely not be sufficient to all the teachers to live-stream their classes from either. Breakout rooms are a great idea, but the teachers are not executing them properly. The kids get sent to the wrong breakout room for their class. Suggestion, teachers need better access to tech support to help them get this up properly. Some teachers are reading to them from a book while they are live-streaming. Suggestion, go to Khan Academy to learn better ways to present. And this was by Christine Mann. The city should provide more funding for teachers to get equipment and technical support they need. Teachers should not have to pay for these or other school supplies. The schools need to provide better access to technology support for those teachers that are still, that still need to learn how to implement technology better. When schools are reopened, the city should provide the funding for extra custodial staff to keep the schools clean. The city should also provide better air quality, quality, better air quality and circulation in the classrooms. There are standalone air filtration and sanitizing systems available to clean 100 square feet areas for $89 to $120. Alternatively, not only have in-person classes in rooms where there are windows, and windows can be opened for additional air circulation. Again, I appreciate everybody's hard work and that you find this feedback suggestion helpful. Christine Mann from Hillary Road. We're getting there. People want me to continue reading, apparently. That's the feedback, so I'll continue to read. This is Jonathan Gorinson. To the Lummister School Committee members in attendance. In light of the recent events surrounding your decision of remote learning, the lack of decorum is astounding. You were given information for parents and faculty and went for the most extreme model. This model that teachers could not have fully been prepared for... This model that teachers could not have fully been prepared for, parents could not have fully prepared for, and children who could not fathom what this would mean for them. These people that voted for remote learning, who would, who would not understand the impact this has had on families that make up the largest body of affected people, have consequently failed children, working parents, extended families, the community, and the public. As if, as if the data from parents and staff was not enough, the COVID nineteen case data is not compelling enough to continue to drive this situation forward. The current experience is by no means a superior model over what transpired in the final months of 2018 and 2019 school year. If anything, we were only told to expect better, yet it's a continuation. There are technical issues, and these are of no fault of anybody when it comes to the classroom. There are privacy issues, and these have serious amplification implications. If you are, if if you don't believe me, leave an unsecured camera in the house. Leave it in the closet, or maybe just point it over at the corner of your kitchen. You won't, you won't need to tell us how it feels, you will know. Finally, by adding so many components to the process for children to learn, the youngest don't always wish to cooperate. For those who need to learn independence, critical thinking, and problem-solving skills, they're unable to do so and end up using their parents as crutches. There is no consideration towards the health of the children. Let me repeat that. There is no consideration towards the health of the children. Their developing eyes are getting too much screen time with too few breaks in between. They're sedentary this entire time during the best hours of the day. There has been no check-in to see how these children are doing in this environment. There is a model that it, this is a model that has shown it does not care for anyone else's well-being. That only serves to exacerbate, exuberate the problems and makes all too clear that weakness of everyone and everything involved. It does not act to identify, remediate, and resolve, or create learning and opportunity, growth opportunities. To continue down this path outside of DESI's guidance, in the spirit of gathered data and ignorance, lack of awareness and disinterest as to what this looks like for students, teachers, and families demonstrates a person unfit to continue to serve on the school committee. For those not in attendance, you may continue to excuse yourselves. Take care. Jonathan Gorison, Wells Court. Tina Allen Burajav. While the school committee has been providing, approving many hybrids, the vote to so initially were forced by laws that protect specific groups of students. There are many students who requirements, whose requirements are not being met and given their, this full remote model. They may, they may now be additional students whose educational needs go unchecked. While some groups are being added to in-person learning, there is the rest of the student population to continue. I am voicing a serious concern regarding the lack of metrics for any of these educational models. The majority of students remain in full remote without having used the guidelines provided by DESI, the direction provided by the governor, the assessment of our superintendent, or the voice of the community. DESI clearly states, and I quote, "The school board is a legal agent of the state and must therefore fulfill both state and federal mandates. At the same time, the board must be responsive to the community it serves." There are currently no metrics for keeping our students in full remote. We're in full remote at the mercy of the school committee by votes not substantiated with fact. This is very concerning. I worry without these metrics, we will continue to remain at the mercy of the school committee when it is time to consider a hybrid and return to full in-school education. I mean, when is it time? How can any educational option at any time possibly be sounded, soundedly decided without metrics? Guidelines are an obvious component to such serious decisions making process, making process and without simple, simply leaves votes for the type of education our students will receive at the individual will of each school committee member. These metrics should have been developed months ago. And while I may understand that so many months ago, such an idea wouldn't, would not be at the forefront of anybody's mind, the absolute necessity of these metrics cannot be ignored. Fact-based metrics to continue full remote education is essential. Now, they are also essential for any vote toward any model. The school committee should not be using fear, personal beliefs, or any other motion to decide our students' educational fates, especially one who have and have had the guidance from DESI, your governor, and the CDC and your community has voiced its concerns numerous times. Thank you for your time, Tina Allen. And she leaves a link here to the metrics set forth by the state. We have three left. My name is Angela Thomas, and I'd like to thank everybody for taking their time tonight to hear what I have to say. My husband is Greg, and I have two children in the Lummester Public School System. One is second grade and one is kindergarten. Our kindergarten is on an IEP and it has autism. Many of us here tonight are saying the same things. So my goal is to try not to be redundant, but also make some sort of impact in the eyes of the school committee. We realize that this is a different, difficult situation. But one of the biggest issues we see as parents is the inability for the school administration, the teachers' union, and both city and state officials to all work well together to come up with a sustainable opening plan. It has been shocking to listen to the other school committees call, and it is apparent how much disrespect you all have for one another. There seems to be a very big disconnect between all parties. We teach our kids every day how to get along with others. I shouldn't have to be lecturing adults to do the same thing. It's, it's becoming very clear, despite the recent state metric updates, that COVID is continuing to be used as the sole reason not for not opening. But in reality, there are repair and financial obstacles that are preventing reopening that aren't being properly disclosed. Our family, along with many others, now has to pay for daycare, childcare, to help aid with remote learning, and the costs are astronomical. Why is it that other daycare and businesses are able to come up with creative ways to meet their family customer needs while still following safety protocol, but there doesn't seem to be that level of organization from all of you? I urge each school committee member, especially those without children, to come spend a week in our shoes. Bring your mask, come sit and do remote learning with our kids while you juggle your jobs. This is the, this is the only way for you really to see learning with our kids while you juggle your jobs. This is really, this is the only way to to really see what daily challenges we face. If you are unable to look at this situation objectively and without personal bias, then you have no business in this current position. Thank you for your time, and I hope you can all find a way to work together to get our kids back. Angela Thomas. My name is Amy. I think I've read this one. Kreiziac. My son is Zachary. He's a freshman at the high school. I'm concerned about his remote learning and the emotional well-being of my son. Unfortunately, I have to work, so he's home all day by himself. I understand that he's at high school and would, and should be able to be alone, should, should be alone, but the social isolation is causing him to regrow. He has autism and was starting to do better in socialization, but I have noticed how much the lack of socialization is affecting him. I work in the healthcare industry, I see many people back at work, so I am for them going back to school. I don't feel that they're getting the full education they deserve. And there are many kids out there that won't ask for help, so they will continue to fall behind. Private schools have been in-person since the beginning of this year, and I feel the current situation, the current education plan is doing our children a service. I'm writing to the school committee to see if you would agree that remote learning is not working, especially K through five. They need a teacher in front of them to keep them focused. Children should not be in front of the computer five to six hours a day. It's not good for their eyes and their emotional well-being. My three grandchildren, one in kindergarten, two in the first grade, would never have been able to do that. So my daughter had to make the decision to use some of their college funds to send them to private school. She wanted them to stay healthy emotionally and academically. They're doing great and loving it. They do so, they do as they are told, wearing their mask and socially distancing, using hand sanitizer, washing their hands many times a day. Children really can follow rules. It is terrible that she has to use her money, that they have to use their money. She owns a home, and they also own a home and pay taxes, which fund part of the school budget. I think the wrong choice was made, and we need to face the fact that remote learning does not work for all kids. Jessica Chery, Batel Street, Lummester. Kevin and Deena Pritchpatrick, Maryam Ave, Lummester. Special meeting regarding 2020 Lummester Year. We would like to address how the decision was made, the school committee, in coming up with a decision for strictly remote learning to begin 2020 school year. After listening to the budgetary meeting for the school system and receiving virtually no answers asked of them, we learned that a questionnaire was sent out to all parents, asking their opinion on how to handle the start of the school year, and it seemed to have been ignored. Fortunately, COVID numbers have remained relatively low. Yet in other cities in town, especially all around us, parents have have had the choice for children to participate in hybrid learning. How did you come to this, this decision to begin the school year? We no longer have children in the school, but we pay our taxes and we're grandparents who have participated in remote learning. We understand the stress is both ways due to this virus. There are definitely questions that the school committee needs to answer. Families and children have lost precious time that could have been better utilized to at least begin the school year 2020. We're getting there, Jay. Becky Bijou, Smith Street. I'd like to start by saying what an amazing job our teachers are doing. Our teacher has been amazing and has the patience of a saint. Our child is a sixty-year-old fourth, first grader. Remote learning has been very difficult for him. He struggles without paying attention, and I need to sit with him the majority of the time. In my home, that is difficult, as we also have a two-year-old. When I hear my child put himself down because he cannot, he cannot focus, or he gets so overwhelmed with constant distractions from other kids, technical issues or home distractions, it's truly heartbreaking. I asked him to behave as if he was in school, and he, his reply was simple. I am not at school, I'm at home. Watching my strong son struggle emotionally, hating school, and fall behind is becoming too much. Please consider your remote learning vote and consider at least a hybrid model. Let us continue to do specials at home, but let's get them back to the academics. Some kids simply cannot learn this way. I know mine cannot. Homeschooling will be a serious consideration. It is endless. They are, they're just, they just keep coming in and coming in and coming in. And I don't know that I can continue to read these. I don't. It is, it, I think I did read this one. I'll check. They say that they called and left a message. I'm sorry. I don't know. I'd like to stop by thanking the school committee for doing an excellent job they're doing, taking all factors into consideration during this pandemic and this difficult situation. The gradual approval of the micro hybrid model is a smart and responsible decision. As a teacher, I'd love to have my students in front of me, but that's not. I think that was read, right? Yep. Was that read? Finally, I want to, yeah. From my personal perspective as a teacher and a parent, all parties involved are dealing with the issues as they arise and being incredibly flexible. Though things are not perfect, I am proud to see the community rising to the occasion in order to keep each other safe. Finally, I want to speak to the rehiring of the staff that were laid off in order for students to safe, safely return in a hybrid model, are fully in-person. We need our teachers called back. This is not possible if the schools are consistently funded at the bare minimum. Lummester Public Schools employees have done the best they can with what they have had to far too many years now. It seems as though every year the same argument occurs. The school proposes a budget, and then it gets shot down under the guise of we already gave the schools X amount of dollars more than the last year. The problem is last year's schools were not given enough, nor were they given the enough for the last several decades. School funding should take precedence over bringing rights to a large stabilization account. There needs to be a compromise. Please fund our schools in the way that shows the community that children are in priority in investments in the city. Sarah Gates. Okay. So I think I've gotten to them all. So thank you for hanging in there with us. The purpose of the meeting was that at the last school committee meeting on Monday, I had made a motion to bring kindergarten, first, second, third, and possibly fourth grade students, to at least get them back into hybrid. That would have, that would have necessitated a second. I did not get a second, which means we couldn't have debate or conversation about it. So I call this meeting because I'm concerned about the future of those students who are not learning remotely. I am concerned about those students with IEPs and special needs, and I'm concerned with those students who are left home alone during the day because their parents have to choose between going to work and paying the rent and, and, and staying home with their children. I think tonight, Mr. Cohen and a number of people have talked about the metrics. They have talked and spoke to the facts of, so what is the criteria? We need that answer. We've also heard conversation about the budget gets cut. If I can get a copy, Wendy, of Worcester, and I want to show you and give you an example of transparency. The city of Worcester was set to receive fifteen, over fifteen million dollars in additional funds from the state. We were going to get about seventy thousand. They had to meet to discuss where they would cut. But they also, in a transparent way, spoke to cost savings. So they went on to talk about how much they would save because they haven't had to run buses. They haven't had to bring in substitute teachers. So they, in transparency, said, we've saved some money. They also talked about many of the other areas that they were able to save, right down to the crossing guards. We're not, we don't use, we don't need crossing guards. We don't need buses. We don't need substitute teachers right now. And they went all the way down the line and communicated with the public, school committee, city council, the mayor, city manager, and everyone else in between. What's next up for us is a budget oversight committee that will work through the mayor's office. The state is not only giving the school department what they received last year, and if you check on all accords, last year was a sufficient amount, according to them. They're also receiving on top of what they received last year, adjustment for inflation, another one point seven million dollars. Not only are they receiving, in the middle of COVID, not only are they receiving what they received last year in funding from the city, but a minimum, minimum of one point one million dollars. So that's an increase. Yet, teachers haven't been hired back, staff hasn't been hired back. And I think we're all under the impression that once all of that money and all those funds are returned, then so would staff. And that hasn't happened. And so now I'm asked by the public and the taxpayer and teachers and parents, I don't understand this. If they're getting what they got last year plus more money, where is it? And I think we have a responsibility to be able to provide an answer, similar to the city of Worcester that communicated through transparency. Here's what's going on. So we would be looking for members to serve on that committee. If you would like to be on that oversight committee, budget oversight committee, then please, by all means, send a letter of intent to the mayor's office at WWW, I'm sorry, at d mazzarella@lemminster-hyphen.com, and we will take a look at all of those. And again, this isn't to embarrass anybody, but I think it's a time for us to be able to, in a transparent way, communicate with the public as to where is this money? And why are we talking about budget cuts when we've actually got an increase in funding? I'd also like to speak to Ms. Liddy that spoke earlier tonight and said, it shouldn't be a photo op to purchase Chromebooks and technology. Let me bring you back to 2018. In February, where I asked for the city council to transfer money to buy Chromebooks for our students so they could learn on the weekends and nights, didn't know about COVID. And at the time, tech, our tech administrator, Steve Mamon, suggested that we only purchase two fifty, because they could only get two fifty up and running, and they needed them for testing, for MCAS testing. We offered to purchase more, but they felt comfortable. We used our COVID money. We raised public money privately and helped a lot of students get technology. So thank you for all those. I mean, we're going to leave now. I mean, I think we've read everybody's comments into the, into the minutes. This, this, this recording here on LTV and also rebroadcast on WLPZ is a record of a meeting that the mayor called a special meeting. The mayor has the, right under the charter, call special meetings to speak on any issue or any subject at any time. We did that lawfully and legally. The school committee left to attend a, to a The school committee left to attend a workshop where there is one guest coming in from the Mass Association of School Committees. It was said and stated very clearly today by the city attorney that this meeting could run into the next meeting, and we could just delay the other meeting until everybody got there, until we finished this meeting. It is now 7:16, and thank you for watching. Thank you, everybody, for your comments. Whether you stopped me outside, came to my office, your comments are helping. Already, they're talking about remote learning. They weren't talking about it last week. You are making a difference. Keep it up, and your voice is being heard, and it has to be heard just through me, but believe me, we're taking action. Tomorrow, we'll take some actions on setting up remote learning academies/centers, and help is on the way. Thank you.